Here we go. Hi, let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord is our God.
Alright. It's gonna be shorter than I thought. Alright. Uh, Jake, you're gonna have to, uh, you're gonna take the notes for us then? Thank you very much, appreciate that. Alright, so today, this is our January thirteenth, uh, meeting here of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. A few things on the agenda, first and foremost, we'll get, uh, we should probably do the nominations first before we get to the minutes and everything else. Uh, because we have a couple of minutes to look over here. Why don't we do that and then we'll look at the minutes in case there are gonna be any changes in this? We have a, uh, a slate here of nominations for these various, uh, positions here. So I will open it up since it's just us. Anybody wish to throw their names in?
Well, I wanna say Scott, I think you've done a good job and if you wanna continue, I would nominate you.
I'll second that nomination.
Oh, I will, I'll, I'll, I'll do it. I mean, that's, that's fine, that's, I mean, that's, that's okay. I, I will certainly do and I appreciate the, uh, the kind words. Anybody then for, for Vice Chair?
We both individually or?
No, we'll do, well, let's just change, we'll do them all as a slate. Do you still wish to do, be the Vice Chair, Bob?
If anyone else is interested, that's fine too, I'm not.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm willing to, but I, I wouldn't feel bad as someone.
I, I would second Mr. Moses as Vice Chair.
Okay.
Bob, I didn't understand what you said.
No, I thought it wouldn't be opposed if someone else is interested, I wouldn't.
Alright, I'll make the motion for Bob.
Are you interested?
I'm willing to continue.
Okay.
Continue as President or Vice President?
No, no, Vice.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I didn't understand, okay.
No, sorry.
I thought you were trying to nominate yourself and I was just trying to oblige you.
Alright, uh, Michael, I will, I'll also, I'll nominate you there to continue as the Secretary if you are still interested.
Uh, I, I, I mean, the reality is, since we have, uh, Recording Secretary.
Okay. You're handling it just fine.
Your signature and Katie might, might join in, God, they're all in here.
Okay. Alright. Any seconds there for Michael?
Seconds.
That's everybody, wow. Okay, we'll put that Dave on that.
Can I, can I add anything about the Recording Secretary though?
Uh, yeah.
Last time, so by saying Recording Secretary, that just means that she needs to keep, required to keep the file.
Yes, and send, she sends out the...
Yeah, we're sending them out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I, I don't necessarily know what we're after, but I sent you a message, Scott, about my thoughts on...
Yes.
The taking of the minutes on a regular basis. Uh, I just, my feeling is, I don't necessarily think, not, not that, um, Ron has done a bad job, in fact, he's done a great job. Um, I just can't imagine that that's the most economical way of having minutes, I don't know how much time he's spending on it.
I have a comment.
And, and my other thing is, it also means that we're really paying to have a solicitor take minutes and not necessarily focus in and pay attention to any legal matters, which is really why we paid a big bucks to them. That's my recommendation.
What is your recommendation?
That someone else actually be the one to take.
Well, I don't want it to be Lois. She would sit in here with a recorder and the minutes were horrible.
I understand.
That's true.
I'm not recommending, I'm not recommending that either and I think I love having good minutes.
Yeah.
I do.
It's important that we have good minutes.
Um, I just think that I'm not sure that, though, Lois, I mean, I, I don't know how, I mean, I'd love to see how many, and it was probably an extra hour.
It's a couple hours per because you guys make sure that there are...
It goes back and it goes another hour, I mean, there's, you could totally hire a company to come in and do it.
That's it?
And do it perfectly. What, how much is it?
Two hundred bucks a minute. Yeah, one ninety-eight fifty. Very generous.
So four hundred dollars for us to have minutes every time?
Yep.
You can easily pay anyone beautiful minutes.
Three hundred, ten, okay.
And, and we're also losing something in that hour.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And maybe we should ask the supervisors to see if there's an alternative service that can provide, you know, meaning minutes for us.
Yeah, that, that would, I mean, and it's not like something that's urgent, but I would recommend leaving that direction.
What about Julia, is that something that she would be considered doing?
Certainly, talk to her, I mean, she definitely does a lot as it is, but I can definitely bring it back to my colleagues. I, I agree, uh, you know, I've done it a couple of times, not saying I wanna do it every time, but I don't, it's one ninety-eight fifteen hour to do. I don't, you know, I think that it is, does make an economic sense.
I think maybe the supervisors can just look into it, there's, it might even just be...
It's not an issue of confidentiality, our meetings are open anyway.
Exactly, exactly.
I bet you contact like English Department, ESU and know how to see students appearing in it now, then, then we gotta worry about the quality of the minutes.
What I don't have to worry about now is the quality of it and when I first came on this board, whatever it was, six or seven years ago, it was terrible.
It was, it was horrible.
And six and we can...
No idea what was going on in the meeting, no idea.
And I also, I will also say, I'm not, it's not as thoroughly, the number one issue for me is not as far as the two hundred dollars. It's that during that hour, he's focusing on taking the minutes, which is the reason that we don't wanna take the minutes is we wanna be able to participate in conversations. That is, he should be participating in legal.
Agreed.
Input.
Agreed.
My bitter concern.
I don't think it's a problem, but okay. I actually don't agree at all. I would leave it right with him, I don't think it's been a problem with him when we've had, when we've had legal questions for him, but the supervisors can...
Yeah, I think he's able to multitask.
Yeah. I like, I like his minutes. It's, it's...
Michael has a point.
You do.
Four hundred dollars.
I guess two hundred dollars, 'cause he's already being paid to be here.
Yes, it's just, it's a backend extra. Alright, well, we have supervisor here, so...
Well, you're paying the bills.
You're paying the bills, uh, Jake, so, you know, by all means.
Alright, so as it stands right now, Lois is the Recording Secretary.
Recording, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to bring up that time.
No, I understand, that's okay. Uh, Jake is.
I'll make a motion, we approve this slate as presented.
Second.
Okay, second invited, Dave. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? To, to approve this slate as, uh...
Approve this slate as presented.
Yeah, I was, as, as nominated. Uh, so no further discussion?
Can we have some discussion on organization?
On this way or on this?
No, it's fine.
Oh, then let's just say, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congra, congratulations, alright.
Congratulations to you.
Alright, now, let's go, let's take care of the minute things first, let's take a look first at the November eighteenth minutes and then the December ninth minutes.
So we're gonna come back?
Yeah, we are, we're gonna do the minutes first and then we're gonna come back. Yes, 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 yes.
With respect to the current minutes in front of us, um, page five, he talks about, uh, the writer has reexamined his handwritten notes of the November meeting. And this has to do with what Martha Carbone was talking about and it was later shown by looking at the Zoom meeting that, uh, she was correct.
Yeah.
So how do we make that adjustment in the November and then do we need to make the same adjustment in the December?
Well, we, I think we just, well, let's take a look here, this is...
Do we have November minutes? We do have the November.
We have the November eighteenth's.
This is the one that were approved or have been revised?
This is the one that was approved and then there was a page five and six that he emailed. That he, this is the revised one. In December here. If you, number nine is under public comment, Martha Carbone was present.
How, how many out was?
Yeah, and on page three of the November eighteenth, it is, it is, uh, corrected.
So, the November has already been corrected?
Well, it's on here, if you took it to the third page, you see there's strikeouts.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh...
So we actually need to approve both meeting minutes?
Yeah, exactly, we have to do both.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the amended minutes from November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Alright, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Hold, hold on, oh, shoot.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry, there, and amendments, you know.
Yeah, and amendment, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just...
That was the most important part.
Yeah, it's in there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, let's look at December ninth, please.
I would recommend that we take out the paragraph that talks about this writer has reexamined, 'cause that may just confuse things in the future if somebody's reading this.
Let's get to page five on that one.
On, on the November eighteenth one?
Yeah.
December ninth.
Look at the fifth page.
Unless, unless this version is filed as is with the strikeouts.
Which, which number are you, that's November.
If November is all miles, the way we just strike out.
It has to be, 'cause we just, we just approved it as correct.
And I don't, David, I don't necessarily think it's confusing to have that in the minutes for the next one, 'cause if someone ever looked, they could see, oh, yeah, it's a strikeout.
No need for it to be in there.
Which, which paragraph is that?
This writer has reexamined his handwritten notes of the November eighteenth meeting and stands by the approved minutes. I think we should just have him strike it, it doesn't need to be in there.
Agreed.
Alright, so that's number nine, one, two. Alright.
Make a motion, we approve the December ninth meeting minute with that third paragraph of, uh, par, of section nine be struck from the minutes.
I'll second that. Jake, can you ask Ron to just reprint it with that so that it gets, so that the official copy gets, gets that piece removed?
Don't worry.
Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I just checking the box, go.
I know it's not a, a, while we're, um, discussing the minutes, we had talked about the fact that we're, we're not positive that on every occasion, the specific recommendations or actions made by the Planning Commission as recommendations to the Board of Supervisors are always being presented to the Board of Supervisors as such, seems that over last year, there's been, there's been an assumption that the supervisors have been reading the minutes and you might be reading the minutes in need.
Correct.
But I just think there, our minutes format should have a, I don't wanna say a summary, but there really should be a formal presentation of recommendation to the supervisors. Or some way so they know there were, there was these formal acts, whether it means folding it in the minutes and saying to supervisors, all formal, um, recommendations have been bolded. I mean, I, I've seen that when I used to do our minutes, there was a...
Oh, yeah?
It was bolded, just so that everyone, they were just quickly reading.
Good idea.
True, see...
I didn't think about that, that is a good idea. Okay, let's do it that way.
There should also be some formal response from the supervisors.
I don't know if they're required to respond.
What I mean?
I don't know if they're required to respond by law, but...
I'm not talking about law, I'm talking about how we operate on a practical basis. As you pointed out though, there, there, under the law, there is a provision for communication between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. And if the Board of Supervisors instructs the Planning Commission to do something, for example, to boldface the certain areas in the minute, or for example, that they agree that they will present us with a brief summary of their discussion of our recommendations, it'd be all that bad. I think that's, that's, that's written, like in the, in the, in the procedure. It just seems to me, the reason I raised that question. And, you know, it's funny, I came into this meeting and I said to myself, you know, I'm just gonna shut up tonight and, and not raise any controversial issues. Um, but it seems to me that we've brought up several things in the past year that we've never really got a response on. And...
Have you looked in the, I, I, I don't know the answer to this, have you looked in the minutes or attended the four meetings to know whether or not they've responded? Do we know, have you looked in the, I, I, I don't know the answer to this, have you looked in the minutes or attended the four meetings to know whether or not they've responded?
I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to say in a different way, I'm just saying, that's sort of a response.
No, I, I, but from a practical point of how we operate together, to do what is best for the township, if there's an issue that's brought up, like the, the enforcement of violations, which has been brought up and discussed several times. There should be some kind of response to that, I mean, we should be working together.
May, maybe the way.
And it's not a matter of what you read or what you don't read, it's like, we sit across the table from each other, and we talk about it, and we say, what are we really trying to do with the township?
Is there a way to fill into, what's the different meetings you have, the, the public meetings you have, you have your?
We have, well, we have just regular meetings, which is, with the board of supervisors and that.
You're the only, then you have work sessions of those with us?
Um, we don't have any work sessions anymore, we, we have one meeting that's a four and one that's a seven.
Okay.
And they're just considered regularly scheduled meetings?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess my thought is, if there was a stand, I don't know what you're, I actually, I, I haven't been, I've been to board meetings in the past, or just supervisor meetings in the past, I haven't been a long time. But I don't know if there's, if there could be a standing item on the agenda for the supervisors, which was actions brought before, um, and in some ways, that is on our side to look at the minutes of their meeting, but it guarantees that anything we brought up has been brought forth, that's just impossible.
A standing item on the board of supervisors meeting, on their agenda?
Yeah, for, for, like, so obviously, with any actions related to an application aren't necessary, because they're gonna go through those applications.
Planning commission business.
Uh, it could be planning commission, um, I don't know if it'd be, um, all, not related to app, current application, because those, obviously, when you're going to current applications, you have to review any recommendations made by this house, right?
Sure, yeah, no, I, every time that you do anything, or that the county planning commission does something, we get copies of those minutes or reviews. And they're included either, um, in our reading packet, or are given to us ahead of time, too.
I guess that's, for me, that's the difference, when I, obviously, Monroe County is writing a letter, which is sort of a formal action, and attached their minutes. Whereas we're just, I don't think they're being presented in some sort of formal fashion, maybe it should be.
I like the bold facing, I think that's just what we need to be, and if we, as long as we make it a recommendation.
And our minutes are already included in their packet.
Right.
Are you, Jacob, you could have planning commission issues, or discussion, zoning issues, I mean, there's other, other areas that probably.
I mean, presently, we don't have any standing reports on, on board supervisors, that are generally, you know, the minutes of the day, any new business that comes up, and if something happens at the planning commission meeting that we.
Some of them are readdressed. I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to say, I want to make it easy for the supervisors, so that it's very clear, and if that means placing our, our actions in a way that says, either all the actions related to submitted proposals, and usually the actions that are not related to submitted proposals, maybe it's bold and in a different color, I don't know.
Instead of the bold, would you require a response from them?
No, I think, I think any action of board, um, should be bolded, but stuff that's not related to a permission or application should be treated as that.
So I, Jacob, you guys must get copies of our minutes, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing, and sort of paraphrasing the summary of what I'm hearing, is it would be nice to get feedback from the supervisors as to whether or not you took our recommendations, added to them, and if you didn't take recommendations, why? So that we can be a, I don't want to say in sync with you, but get feedback on what we're doing, I think that's what Mitch is saying, we need, we need to have some form of communication, either face to face, or copies of your meeting minutes, or summary of why you did what you did, just to kind of make us feel like, you know, our efforts are not in vain. Because we put a lot of effort into this, and it'd be nice to know that it's beneficial to the supervisors.
True.
I always, people ask me, what is the purpose of the planning commission, and I don't want to get into a big, long explanation, I say, well, we sort of flush out the project to make it easy for the supervisors, we kind of go through all the preliminary submissions and talk about things. So when you get it, it's at least solidified a little bit, and you've got a lot of feedback from, from our members, if that makes sense. So how do you think that could happen, Jacob, how, how do you think we could get feedback from the supervisors, should we just get copies of your minutes and we just look?
I think to an extent, that's what you should, but we also, um, internally, we have our own follow-up memo from, from Julia after a board supervisor meeting that explains what we passed, and then an action item for staff, if they have to contact somebody or mail something, or.
Well, I don't care about that, I want to know, if a project that came in, with, with, how did you, how did, what were your conditions?
Yeah, yeah, so, so, I, I would suggest, um, from my personal perspective, I can't speak for the others too, but I, I would think something like that would be reasonable, um, you know, when each project comes up, just so we know, you know, files and things, and other, I think there's some way of doing it, I'll, I'll have to talk with them to.
Yeah.
See how, but I, I think that's very sensitive concept.
Yeah, I think a simple way to do it, to get started anyway, is just have one copy of the meeting minutes, and, you know, we can pass it around and look at it, or maybe have one of the members here.
Yeah, I just pulled it, actually, I was just looking at them on, uh, that's what I was doing, I was actually just looking at them on township website, see, like, the supervisor meeting minutes, and, you know, I mean, some of these items, like, this is the most recent one, this, I just pulled up, was.
Oh, gosh, that was a big one.
Yeah, that was November twenty-third.
Yeah.
They don't have the, they don't have the other, but. You know, December was, that's not on there yet, I was just, I was just looking for it, you know, but I mean, that's, I mean, I mean, a simple, you know, if there was anything that was not, say, uh, plan or review related, that we passed on conditional uses and land use developments and so forth, um, that's really what we're looking for some feedback on, you know, when we make those other requests, yeah.
There, 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 it seems to me, there are two categories of things that can pass along to the supervisor. One, recommendation, and this, Michael, I agree, those should, when, when the minutes get to the point where, where a recommendation, a motion is made to recommend act, action, right, so, that should be bold facing, but there's another category, and that is request. Like, let's just talk about that, we request feedback on, for example, in one case, uh, which we've been doing forever, is, and what's, what's with the, uh, uh, the zoning officer, and what's with enforcement, what's being done through the zoning officer and otherwise to enforce the laws, laws of test, the ordinance, so. Perhaps those requests could be made in the form of a, in, in effect, a formal request, which would be seconded, and then voted on, and then put in typos, that's what I'm saying, so. So that there'd be, there's two distinct categories of actions requested, one would be a, the, a recommendation, right, or whatever, and the other would be request, specific request of the supervisor, which would then demand, you know, would command an answer, or an answer, or. Would tag an answer.
To me, it is absolutely absurd, that we've been talking about ordinance and code violations, and the enforcement of that.
Yep.
For the better part of six months.
More than that, yes.
Okay, my tenure, the better part of six months, and nothing, but, there's a lady here, so I'll say, nothing has been done about it, okay? This, this is crazy, when there is a problem, it should be addressed, and either the supervisors aren't hearing it, or they, they're just saying, well, screw you.
No, or they're powerless to do anything about it.
I don't believe that.
But with all due respect.
If we, if we are powerless to do this, then, and that's, that's a very good statement, what value added do we bring?
You know, well, there's three lots of value added, just not on enforcement, right now.
That, no, seriously, what value added do we bring? The engineer looks at all the plant that comes in, they do all the detail work, we look at it, and we say, okay, that looks all right, and the supervisor should approve it. Why not put any value added, what, what are we doing for the township?
Those are on ones that you've been on, we've added a hell of a lot of things in bigger projects.
We worked, we redrawn, we did, we did ordinances, we, I mean, we've actually done a fair bit, and just, it doesn't happen every meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, we spent a year and a half on the overlay, whether you like it or not.
Right.
We spent four years on, three years on that, and, and for a short amount of time.
The, the point I was making was, that the fact that we're still talking about ordinance and code violation enforcement, without anything being done about it. This doesn't happen in business, and I know this is not business, and I know it's bureaucratic, and I know it's legal, and I understand all that, but if I'm gonna devote my time to something, I want to see something come out of it. And I don't want to see it come out five years from now, I mean, it needs to be timely.
You chose the wrong place to, 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 to say that, you're, this is a municipal body, a council of eight thousand people, and you're expecting something commensurate with the CEO of Apple, if he wants a report, he's gonna get it, but this takes time, and everybody in this room has been here forever. Either just living here, or been on the commission, or other commissions of the township, and I don't like to say hurry up and wait, but it takes time to get these things done. Economic development, though, that we're still working out the kinks, which you've been involved in, is here, it's happening. You know, people are building under it, and we're tweaking it, as Julia presented to you in October, you know, Doug referenced, uh, Souda, which took years to update. We're about to update stormwater, and that, that won't come to, to you specifically, because it's not under the MPC, but these are things that, you know, take some time, and I, I don't think it's, I think you have to look at it from a different perspective, that you are contributing, I think, enough, but it takes time for it to, uh, manifest either physically or in some other way.
How much, how much time does it take to put together a list of the violations that we've talked about in this meeting, and look at them on?
And, and what's been done, is that a rhetorical question?
Pardon me?
Is that, because that's a rhetorical question, when you put, put Jake's color on it, 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 it's, it's, the answer is there is no answer, because.
We're expensive to tell the light.
Truthfully, Joe, I'm wasting my time.
Well, I'll tell you, there are people that have been sat on your chair, and have felt that way, and have left, I'm not saying you should leave, because it's nice to have some dissenting voice, but, there, I don't remember who it was, it was here when I.
Where, where's the sense of urgency, where is the sense of urgency to get things stopped with, go ahead.
David. I think this goes back to my previous comment, again, I'm trying to take in what people are saying and summarize it for myself, is that there seems to be a breakdown in communication from the supervisors to us, back down, when we suggest something, we're not getting feedback as to what's going on. So what I would suggest we do, is we include in our agenda some additional lined items for old business or recommend, you know, recommended business that we follow up on it, for example, when this Franklin Manor gets, when we finally make a recommendation to the supervisors, we then add that to recommended business. And then, next time we come to our meeting, and you've had yours, you can give us a summary of what happened to that meeting, or, uh, Robert can do that.
Again, at least see it in the.
Or look at it in the minutes, and then we can then get that feedback, and then we can also put on there a discussion of, of, you know, zoning violations, status needed from supervisors, if we keep track of it on our end, we can then follow up with the supervisors, but we're expecting, I'm hearing, is for the supervisors to do this on their own, we need to keep track of it.
Can I just ask Jake a question? Has there been any discussion at the board meetings of, of our recommendation for enforcement and for getting back, uh, summaries of? Yes, we have talked about that, and, you know, it's, it's, a lot of the issue lies in how slow it seems that the Monroe County court system is, is slowing on the things that we have, uh, you know, filed paperwork for, because that, that happens consistently, I mean, I'm in the office a lot, so I'm always seeing county that are filing a form for, for that order. Noted by mail, so, I mean, we're, we're taking it upon ourselves to make sure that that is occurring, um.
And the question was, there was a very, a specific, yeah, these recommendations, I honestly am not sure that they're, they're landing on the, the depth, but very specific recommendation for a very specific type of report.
I'll, I'll say, okay, so, so that, that specific thing, we're obligated to listen to the recommendation, and I'm not saying that it's, you know, uh, terse, or, or rude, or, or not accepting of everyone's, you know, time, but we're not necessarily obligated to act on each request.
You're not, and whether, I think this group is saying, it, it's choice is not to act, but just know that you heard it, we heard it, thank you, we're not gonna act on it.
Right, and we haven't talked specifically about, um, you know, who's going to get, uh, a, a report of how many violations, I could see maybe something on an annual basis, or something like that, but that's not something we've got to at the moment, because we've been dealing with, frankly, a lot of other things that are more pressing than answering that request. Like dealing with, uh, public hearings, or litigation, or, um, getting through zoning, so, it's not that it falls on deaf, that, uh, deaf ears, but, you know, perhaps there is a better way to, to communicate it. I, I was, I, I don't want to pontificate at your meeting here, um, but I, I think that maybe if it's some sort of basic form, and, you know, the, the planning commission, you know, maybe that Ron signs after, you know, you pass minutes, it says, you know, like, it could be bold, it could be a towel, but whatever you want, that says, you know, recommendation to approve, recommendation disapprove, additions, or something like that, and then, maybe afterwards, we can just, sorry, what we took and didn't take, something like that, you know, sounds to be what we're interested, I, I, I can't speak for the, the zoning and permit report at the moment, but people are always free to file write to know requests, but I'm not suggesting that to, to film all anybody, but start making the floor cracking, you know, you know, a legal timeline.
I don't think we're even reading that, I think we're looking, I think what we're hearing is that, okay, we made some recommendations, at least say in the minutes, that the planning commission met, uh, we've, you know, the, these are their, these are, these are their minutes, in addition to the, the plan review and the conditional use or re- review and so forth, they made a couple of other recommendations, and, you know, just decides you're not going to take any action on them at this time, and say you're not gonna take any action on this time, and that's your, that's the line in the minutes. At least we, at least we know it's been looked at, that's the thing we're looking at, Jake.
Well, no, no, and that doesn't bother me, I, I, I can sort, I will take that back to my.
That, yeah, I mean, that's, that is, at its, at its simplest form, I, I know you spend a lot of time having to put out fires, I know that.
No, I appreciate that, I, I don't mean to sound, um.
No, it's okay, I understand.
Appreciate, but that, that's what you said might be a simpler form even than what I said, just returning feedback, you know, we could include in our minutes the planning commission.
Yeah, the planning commission.
Land developments, you know, the planning commission recommended the following, and the board of supervisors accepted the following, and then.
Yeah, saying the, the planning commission recommended the following, but they also, for these plants, and they made other separate requests, in, in their minutes, like we said, uh, you know, a, a monthly or quarterly report or something for the, you know, for the, uh, the code enforcements, for example. You know, and then maybe that'll spur a little discussion with you guys, or whatever, and maybe it is, you know, maybe your minutes say, well, we discussed this, and, uh, we can't look at it in, you know, the March meeting or something. I mean, at, at least then we would at least have something in here, that's what, that's what it sounds like, the frustration part of it is.
Well, we're sitting here a month after we had a discussion on orientation of new members to the planning commission.
Right.
What's been done.
Christmas and New Year's.
I don't care about Christmas and New Year's.
Oh, what is it, I want to tell you, Mitch, Mitch, you know what, it doesn't work like a company, Mitch, it just doesn't.
Well, and also, you're, you're. If we, if we continue to accept that, we won't make and bring value added to our township, there, there, there needs to be. There, there, there needs to be a sense of urgency in getting things done, I mean, that's a simple thing.
There is, I think there is, Mitch, I think there is sense of urgency, it's just their urgency is not yours. And if, and if you're feeling, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I hear, I mean, they're the elected officials, they're not elected, and we're appointed by them. Um, I can, we can provide, I mean, if you provide some information that they think is good, then you're, but if you're providing information that, that it's gonna be a lot of work on their part, or even just some work, they might not wanna listen to you. They can listen, sorry, they might not wanna take action on what, you, or us, or anything that we've said. And that also depends on who's your, who's the, the supervisor at the time.
Not a lot of action.
In your, in your opinion.
To have an orientation program for new supervisors.
I bet if you suggested that you were gonna volunteer to do a bunch of things, it might get spread a lot, but.
I gave my recommendation, because what should be done? Because I came in here, and got none. And it's very difficult to find out what the heck we're supposed to do.
All due respect, we've offered webinars, and have consistently offered webinars, I mean, I'm not, we're not gonna bring in a company to come in here and explain how to be on the planning commission.
It has nothing to do with supervisors doing anything.
Then, then, no one is understanding what you're asking for.
Other than just saying, when, when new people come onto the commission, there's, they're gonna take some courses, they're gonna read some stuff, they're gonna learn about what the objective is, I mean, it's pretty simple. But it doesn't take any action, it's not the, it's over.
That's not true, and that's not the way you talk about it. The way you talk about it is, there's gonna be a fancy work session where we get together and talk about the municipality's planning code. I'm not saying you do it all on your own, but it, it does not require this much energy. But it also doesn't require what you're suggesting either. We earnestly thank everybody here for their time and their service, and I think we go out of our way to make sure that, you know, PSTH trainings are available, that we have a solid engineering team that can talk about all of this at length. I, I honestly thank you for your time, but I'm not sure there's much more I can offer.
All right, we're moving on.
One thing, and as before we get to the plans. We forgot to make a motion with our regular meetings for the second Thursday, and as-needed work sessions on the final Thursday of each month, both at seven o'clock. Do we keep that scheduled? And make that motion, second?
All right.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Right. Eagle Valley Self-Storage, that was the one that was the request to table by?
I, I made a motion recently, uh, table and sell my community, but as per the applicant's request.
As per the applicant's request. Second, uh, Bob, is that your second? Okay. All in favor?
All right, Bob.
All right, I'm gonna suggest we table the, uh, Franklin Hill Manor one also, they're not here. And my recommend, my recollection is that from December nine, they had ninety days to December nine for review and such, so we're, we'd be into February, I mean.
We have day, have, we have a review, so do we not?
Yes.
Oh, that's this one. My air.
Fourteen pages worth.
Okay. No, no, that's, that's, I was, I was, I didn't, I didn't realize that this was the review from it.
Okay.
I, yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see, 'cause it said January, I didn't, it must have been emailed later this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
Okay. That's why I didn't see it, okay.
Mr. Senior, are you here to discuss this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so, the, uh, applicant is proposing a four-lot subdivision on Albert Lane, which is, um, a private road off of Franklin, um, Franklin and O'Kesney, um, our letter, uh, contains a number of comments, a lot of them are either plan-related or technical. Um, I guess the biggest item I'll, I'll point out is that they do want to improve Albert Lane to a local road, um, because a private access road, you can only have four lots accessing the road. There are a number of other ones in addition to these four lots, so they are proposing that.
No. Well, no, no, we saw that, we saw that at the submission, yes.
Okay.
But we had the road discussion across the street with, um.
Hidden Valley.
Uh, right.
But it was the exact same issue.
It was the same thing, yes.
Okay, all right, it was, it was both neighbors discussing each of those, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, so, um, yeah, like I said, our letter, this number of, um, plan-related comments, that's the comments, they do have infiltration burns on each, um, on each lot, so we have, uh, comments regarding that.
There's a lot of stormwater items.
There are a lot of stormwater items.
Yeah.
Mostly that, a little bit landscaping, there were, there were maybe required, and lighting was mentioned, but, yeah.
Yeah, lighting, lighting is a, a good one, discussed with the applicant, because it's up to the township weather.
Are they relighting?
I, I, so, I don't know, um, there's no pedestrians, probably.
It's just over the Wednesday, so.
Yeah, so, I, I'm sure they'll ask if, if the township would require that.
Which item is the road item?
Um, so, uh, comment. Comment thirty-two talks about, uh, which is on page eight. That talks about, um, Albert Lane, and how they need to turn around the area at the end of the new local road. Let me look here, 'cause they.
Talks about widening it, right, early on?
Uh, does it?
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause, 'cause they proposed to widen it, you know, on their plan, so we may not have any specific comments saying that they need to. Um, we do know that they are proposing to widen it to a local road.
So I'm, I'm confused, I'm a clarification, you said that a private road can't have more than four lots on it?
Correct.
So, and that would mean it would have to be a township road?
That's, that's a good question, and, um, they're improving it to a local road, but.
What does that mean, that sounds like, that's a loaded term, local road.
They're approving it to the standards of a local road.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, and.
But not necessarily turn it over to the township.
Right.
But then it's still a private road.
It's a private road.
Yeah.
But it meets the standards of a.
But it meets the standard.
But able to be turned over.
So how is that different than an HOA, that it's a private road, and it's got more than four lots?
So there's no HOA required unless it's less, unless you have twelve or more.
No.
You don't need a homeowner association.
Prowl it.
I'm not saying that they have to have one, I'm saying, the ordinance says you can't have more than four lots on a private road. Well, then what if there's twenty lots, and it's a private road, but it's an HOA, like Lake Valhalla? Because, because when you have, well, what am I, lawyer hat? Because, because if you have a subdivision with more than twelve lots,
then you fall under the, not the sonions of, you fall under the Plant Community Act, which, which has a homeowner association component to take care of common areas.
So what happens when you have between four and twelve?
You have the benevolent dictator like I am. Okay, 'cause my old lane is so old. My house is back pre-World War One, I'm the last one in, and, and basically, I, I run a, I'm not HOA. I get, uh, those stove flour and stone and, and such, and, and my neighbors give me a hundred bucks a year.
So you, you have a private contract with plow the road?
Absolutely. And now, it, because of, because it's an old lane and an old small one, nobody else can build, you can't cut another lot off and build on Boyer Lane, because it would not fall under, it would not fall, which is what I was saying when we had the Shakita discussion. You couldn't do that, because it is, but under these old ones that are still there, I said, we just have the, we just have the road easement, and we get together, and we put it together, so I arranged for the plowing contract and so forth.
This road issue is really just a matter of design, it's just a matter of, maybe preparing the road for dedication, or, they're going to section it.
They don't have to dedicate it.
And they don't have to dedicate a local road.
There, and, and there are a couple of other houses in there. Because old man, he, they're long dead, but old man Leon and, and, uh, uh, I can picture him, he was a psychiatrist from New York. Father tightness, they're all talking about. But they, there are a couple, yes, there are a couple other houses, uh. That, that are in there, they're only, they're only going to improve up to the four lots.
Right.
So we are going to, in essence, approve this, if that's the case, to induce a problem of the four in the front will plow whatever, and the ones in the back will still keep the narrow lane that services those ones in the back, 'cause they're not going to improve and plow it the whole way back. This would be disaster.
Yeah.
And again, I still don't understand, if it's more than four lots, how can it be a private road, which is, even though it's a local road, it does, it's still a private road?
Yeah, because that.
Does the, it does the, it has to be built to the standard, so forth, to the standard that the road could be dedicated.
Yeah.
So it will have to be paved and so forth.
Yes.
To the, no, to the end of these four lots. That's what I'm saying, the houses that are still behind it, of which there are three, 'cause you can see them from the back of my neighbor's house. The house that are, there, there are still three houses back in there.
So they're not, they're, what, what will happen with those houses then?
Nothing.
They'll be paved, paved in a cul-de-sac, and then a road that goes off the cul.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it looks like it has to happen.
They're requiring a cul-de-sac, or some way to turn around.
Or township parts, or.
Or.
Yeah, to turn around, emergency vehicles, or for.
So what you're saying is, they'll make the new road township, they're on, it would be private, but it's.
No, the new road is up to township spec, still private.
Oh, that's, that's the standard of work, talk.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, it's not, they're not proposing, is there, there's no proposal any dedicator, right?
Nothing.
That's what I mean, they just have to make it to, to a standard that they could dedicate it down, down the, the path.
Yeah, number thirty-two talks about all of that. Yeah, the improved Albert Lane is proposed to connect to the existing, that it will remain as a private road. It talks about having the cul-de-sac to turn around.
Well, I think that part of our recommendation should call that number thirty-two out, and say that it's a, it's a riddle that's waiting for a solution. And see.
It's going to become a problem, is what it is.
It's gonna be a problem.
I guarantee it's going to become a problem down the road, 'cause you'll have certain neighbors that won't wanna pay, and they'll fight and so forth. Of which I've had numerous of these fights over my twenty-five years with people. Even with a couple of my neighbors, to be perfectly blunt, until I, you know, made them all in line here to, and we're all pulling in the same direction here for our little three-tenths of a mile, but it's, it's, that's real world.
I mean, the challenge that he created is from our ordinance stuff, right? I mean, our ordinance is requiring that you have to create that, uh, widen roads. That's what it says.
Our ordinance, even if it didn't say create the cul-de-sac and widen the road, and allow the subdivision, you're, you're basically creating a spot of more friction. Yes, by allowing lots to be developed and built that don't have direct access to existing public roadways.
I guess my question is this, besides, I had it, so one point, two in here, but besides that, all of the points in here seem like, if they met all the criteria, there would be a vibe, if, if there's a lot, they have to change a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
But if they came back and said, yeah, we can do absolutely everything that's listed in here, I only saw one that's required discussion for it to be effectively, at least a legal thing, where it'd be hard, and under court of law, for us to say no. 'Cause I say this as a lawyer, um, but I can't remember which one it is, um, I just had it.
Most of my plans were like this. What was the one?
What are we, uh, obligated to do tonight to keep this moving forward? Are we, are we making a motion to the supervisors? Or making a recommendation?
Well, we had, we had ninety days from, excuse me, from December nine, two thousand twenty-one. To make the recommendation, so, but we will have our next meeting on the second, whatever date that is.
Oh, I just thought it was the lighting one, and I actually think it's, sixty-five days. Well, that's where you have to make a, I mean, there need to be six days.
Our next meeting would be on February two.
That's the second Thursday.
And, and where is that in the lineup of the ninety days?
Well, let's find out here.
Sound like about sixty days.
Oh, no, roughly.
'Cause that's the one where.
Thirty.
That's the other term that you applied.
That would be, that would be, I don't know, si- sixty-some.
Okay, so then, then we can, we can see this again.
We can see this again in February.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, send these comments to the applicant for response, and present their responses to us at the next meeting.
I, yeah, and request that they be here for the next meeting.
Well, yeah, have them revise the plan, agree with.
They're copying in on this, aren't they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah. But it's today, pretty much today.
Remise the plan to agree with.
No, they don't have to revise the plan, they, they need to respond to the comments.
Well, they do have to revise the comments.
Well, they'll need to revise the plan anyway, 'cause they're a bunch of.
Not if they don't agree with the comment, then they can commit, and they can make their.
A lot of it's just spoilers, like, like.
Yeah, I'm making the motion.
Go ahead.
I'm saying that we recommend that the applicant respond to the comments either by written objection, or by making changes to the plan, or by giving us an explanation as to why they disagree with the engineer's comments, present it to us at the next February meeting.
In person, yeah. Is that right?
Are they obligated to be here in person, or not?
No, they're not, but we.
So I don't want that in the motion.
We don't put that in the motion, but we will make the second one.
We could make the recommendation.
Yeah, request.
Request. If they explain this stuff to us, you would think they'd want to be here.
They're not here now, so.
Yeah, especially given all this came out today.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually a bit surprised, but I, I will actually second Dave's motion.
Um, just, uh.
Go ahead, discussion, yep.
Do you want to, as opposed to saying, all these comments, clearly you don't want number, what was it, number thirty-two to happen?
I think thirty-two is the problem.
Right, so if you don't want thirty-two to happen, should we amend it to say, um, and the, the applicant should pay in particular, I mean, this is a recommendation.
I'm gonna make a second recommendation.
All right.
For, for the next one, just for that one.
The second, that, that they might wanna take away that, and suggest some alternatives.
Yes, I'm gonna make the second one just for that, actually, so it's in two parts.
The first one tables it, and, and suggests.
Yes.
Why?
The request.
The response, are they here?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
The first one is not tabling it, doesn't include tabling.
No, not table it, we're asking them to respond to the comments.
Okay, perfect, asking for a response.
Heard the process.
No, there's no other discussion, any, all, all in favor?
All right.
All right, I will make a second recommendation, for the, the motion otherwise, that the, over the developer is Franklin Hill Manor, uh, land development plan, pay particular attention to the road comment, paragraph thirty-two of the January thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, Boucher and James's letter.
That the only number that, uh, does is that?
Well, I know that's the big one.
That, that, I think that's the, yeah, that's, 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 that's one that addresses the cul-de-sac. Um, I do have a comment.
Where was the other one? Twenty is the other big one, the lighting.
I do have a, a general, a miscellaneous comment on the last one regarding dedication, because they didn't, um, uh, they didn't identify if they were or weren't, or what were they doing with that local access.
Which, which.
That was comment sixty-four on the last one.
Very end, yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Thirty-two and six, seventy-two.
Sixty-four.
Recommendation that they pay, that they.
Yes, sixty-four.
Paragraphs thirty-two and sixty-four of the January thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, Boucher and James's letter.
Thank you.
Seconds?
Now, wait, the, the wording of that motion is with to pay particular attention to?
To thirty-two and sixty-four.
Okay. And are you gonna make another motion to table it, or something like?
Yes.
After this?
After this. Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
We'll have to finish with your motion.
But that's it, for number thirty-two and sixty-four, particularly.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you, Ben. All right, any other discussion? They're all in favor?
All right.
Okay, now, Michael?
I don't remember us ever making motions and recommendations directly to the applicant, ever in the past before. I'm just curious, how did that information, who is sending that information to the applicant? I know we always make regulations to the supervisor, so I'm just curious.
Well, that's a good point, but I can amend my motion to say that supervisors have the applicant source, respond to the comments.
That's right.
Yeah.
You're right, you're right, you're right. Thanks, Michael, you're right.
The first motion. And the same as the second one.
You get that, Jacob?
Sorry, Jake.
See that pen smoking over there?
Sorry about that.
I think they actually started with like, you know, like, either take time here, but, yeah.
They didn't have any gray arrow, they started this either.
I don't know how the supervisors do that either, cause frankly, I, usually it's John and his community that's at the...
I, I just assume they're gonna do that once they get the letter from Boucher.
I think that they should.
That's, that's just what happened. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I know, but I just wanted to get it off our, our table.
Alright, then they...
And then the third motion.
And then the third motion would be to table it.
Oh, hey, wait, wait.
What is it, Leo?
I'm just not sure, I'm sorry to get, to get, we, we told me it's all in process. If we're not, if there's still time and they're still planning on coming here again next month.
Yes.
Do we, do we hand it off to the supervisors already?
No, no.
I feel, well, I feel like we just done that, I was saying recommendations.
No, we didn't, no, 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 we didn't.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
You're asking the supervisors to do something, though.
Well, we're gonna set out our, set out our...
Tell the applicants to, to, to respond.
Yeah.
Do they normally do that, or do they have to, cause they don't do that, though.
The whole, regardless of...
They'll get it, they don't normally do it and they get it anyway.
I mean, you guys are worried about communication, this whole conversation about communication, you don't seem to care about process by which we're gonna...
What's the pa, what's the, what's the problem?
Normally John has, and John's team, right?
Yes.
Yeah, cause normally we've got another engineer sitting here that says, call the office, is what he's...
Right, they go, you guys talk and figure it out, that's what we're worried about, they're not here right now.
They're absolutely gonna do that.
In, in, in other cases, a municipality would just table it, assuming that the applicant's engineer would get together and talk about it.
Yeah, right.
It's, it's not a question we gotta reach out to you, right?
So, I think really, my thinking is actually, it probably isn't an action, and what, what it really is, is if they call, you've heard what we've said, maybe just put them in the minutes as the, you noted these as issues, and then we can hand the minutes off to them if they want to do that, but, whatever.
I would love to.
The next, the last motion should be something like this. Insofar as this body, as this commission, has not fully, uh, uh, addressed all the items in the letter, Boucher and James's letter.
Yeah, mark the table.
Because of irregularities and complexities thereof, we are tabling the matter and it, and should not go any further until our next meeting.
Until the Feb, till the February.
Can I, can I suggest something?
Yeah, sure, we are, Mike, we are, Jake.
Um, technically, as long as you don't move to recommend hitting the supervisors, that doesn't touch my, my, my desk.
But they didn't, we just did make two recommendations for you, that's both my concern with.
Okay, well, one, I'll say there was never a formal second to amend the, the initial motion, but just to be clear, to simplify, we tried to direct Boucher and James to contact the applicant with additional, uh, impressions of the two items you talked to them. I mean, it's not...
That's kind of the way I, what I wanted to say.
I, I would say that's easier to navigate than to ask the township staff to...
Sorry, guys.
Right, draft minutes, the next twenty-four hours to get it.
Okay, but I, but, but before we go any further, I second Dave's first motion as amended.
He just said it wouldn't second it, so, the amended motion is now secondary.
Now, we've been a mockery of it all.
Want to start over?
Yes.
Scratch all those notes, I'm gonna start over.
It's okay.
I make a motion that we ask the township engineer to contact the applicant to make sure they got the comments letter, that they please respond before the next meeting, and that we are tabling it until that meeting.
Wow. Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, good.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Jake. I'm gonna take this home with me, though, for a lot of years, because I'm, I'm, that is all part of playing.
No, you're right.
Good, we're good, semantics.
And I think that's gonna happen without our motion. That's what happens between your office and then happening.
Yeah, that's, that's usually how it happens, right?
Yeah, if they get this letter...
The problem is they're not...
I, I didn't want to...
It's okay.
Probably you're on a roll.
It's okay.
You're having a, it's entertaining, you're having a reality TV.
Right.
Sure, yeah, problem is they're not here, and normally they'd be here, and we'd tell them, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why I'd be good if they were here to...
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Or then we just deny, or recommend it now.
Uh, you can always request a time extension. I don't know how the township does that, but you don't, you don't...
You gotta get it, you know? It's just to expand upon that, if there is what anyone still desires, at the, well, fundamentally that the, you got to request, the board request the exception, cause the planning commission itself does not have its own window, it's just a window for the whole township to respond.
Right.
But Ron would just ask them to sign it for, we've done that, but...
Yeah, we do that all the time.
Yeah.
But usually when they're here.
Yeah, yeah, I do, it helps a lot.
Alright, that's helped a lot.
Nobody wants a time extension.
Business, non, uncynic, old business, we actually sort of talked about that earlier.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We wish to have any more discussion on number nine, eight?
Well, we sort of talked a bit of a waiting...
We were talking about it, alright. At this point, I think, any other, no public comments?
I mean, Julia was gonna do something that I haven't seen, she hasn't...
Okay. It's...
Any other memo from Julia?
No, it's just tabling.
Which is the tabling of the storage system.
Alright. Did you have something?
Well, follow up to my comments that I made earlier about including things on the agenda, can we have a new category on the agenda that saw, that is, uh, past recommended, past recommendations? And then we include on there, for example, of the November meeting, um, the, we made a motion to, uh, the supervisors on the Shawnee, uh, PRD, Shawnee Valley PRD, uh, we'd like to know what the supervisors ultimately did on that. Did you just have your contin, you had your conditional use?
The first one.
The first one, this week, right?
Yeah. There's three and a half, well, our meeting was probably a half hour, so we had a twenty minute break, because apparently we didn't have sufficient things to talk about until five. We didn't get done with that, and they're all like seven thirty, so like two and a half hours of, of PRD here. We got through party status and then, um, we got to, not even, we got to, well, we had public comment on the agenda, which is like general stuff, and we did party status and then we followed that with Ben Hunter making his case, and, and Ron had to leave by seven thirty, so we had to finish, so, uh, there, so...
So, you're going back, so when you're coming back next month?
We're meeting again, yeah.
So, how, how many, probably a hundred people in here?
It was, it was filled, I can't...
There's some in Zoom too, potentially, right?
So, what you want to do is a re, review, basically an element of review of past recommendations?
Just, as, as, as a start of opening up the communication.
Yeah, we do that.
And when we make a recommendation, we add to our...
Wasn't that one, the second one?
Oh, yes.
I guess if you just want to go into terms of communication, not that, not that we do our, 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 our session, joint work session.
What about the, and that's all.
So, like, maybe we should just always schedule them every quarter, and then, and that was quarterly meetings, that's what we review, these are all recommendations to be made. We don't know what they are.
That's a great idea, actually.
I, I'd like to say, let's just take baby steps, let's just say, have it on the, the agenda, all we have to do is then go open up the meeting minutes from the supervisors and see what they said, if it's not working...
Oh, we can rule it, yeah, I like that.
We can just look at it.
If the minutes aren't ready, they take two months to be ready.
Well, then we carry it to the next month, we don't, we don't take it off the agenda until it's resolved by us. It's considered old business that we need to just do a follow-up on, read the medium minute, the minutes and say, okay, we basically took all of our recommendations, but they added this one, or whatever they did, and then we know and we move on.
That's good, I like that idea.
So, what we really need to do then is, just add under, well, I can just add...
Our business.
I can just ask Lo, Lois to add, just like we did with the other one here, to keep this on the agenda, so we'll just say it, a B, which is, review...
Yeah, it's, it's gonna require some follow-up from Bayou Scott to say, add this, take this off.
Yeah.
I got another one for you.
Well, I always get, I always get them from Lois anyway, and sometimes, and sometimes I do change and add, you know, add some things.
The other one is a, a regular, formally joint session.
That will, but what's...
Some of these things can be raised, please take it.
That's okay, but let's do this part first.
Okay.
I agree with Dave, let's just, let, let us, let's actually do the baby steps to see if we can work out some of the, uh, the bumps. Okay.
Well, and, not to keep throwing gasoline on the fire here, but, um, in the, uh, December one, Mitch brought up about the comprehensive plan and where that's at, the status of that, and is that something we wanna keep on the unfinished business, that we talk about that again? Um, you know, Mitch and I have talked about that a little bit independently, and, um, my position on that is it's, it's a lot of fluff, and it's nice to have these visions, but the reality is, we're all, we're limited on what we can enforce based on what the zoning and the ETC says. We can have a vision, and we can say we want to maintain a rural, rural, you know, township, or flowing hills and stuff like that, but, um, if every person that owns a piece of land has rights to develop it based on what the zoning is. ETC requires zoning of every type in their municipality, so there's limits on what we can do. And I, and I, I told this to Mitch, but I'm gonna say it publicly here now, is, um, one of the things that he doesn't like, and I didn't like fifteen years ago, was the cutting down of all these hills, and it started with where the Dairy Queen is.
Yeah.
And, you know, that was a beautiful rolling hill, and before the zoning was changed, they went in there and basically leveled it, and now it looks like shit. So, we went and we, uh, changed the ordinance to include the reduction in the amount of steep slopes you can touch. That sort of goes with the, the, uh, the long range plan that we have. But I do think it's a good idea to be, to stay focused on that and look at the ordinance as to how we can keep this rural atmosphere, and, uh...
My, my concern with that is that it's ultimately, you're like, I'm, I'm not trying to pass the buck, but what passes and what doesn't pass is, is ultimately up to the elected officials. And, because there's an election every year for a new supervisor?
Every, two.
Every two years? It's really ha, hard to have, uh, strategy, a long-term strategy, because, uh, three different supervisors have a completely different set of leaders that are deciding what they want to implement, and that's why you'll have, you know, strategies that are four-year strategies, because that's how long an elected official comes into play. The reality is, if it's, you have a strategy that is, the planning commission's sort of our ideal, but you come up and somebody come, else comes on, maybe they don't want it to be rural. I don't want, I don't want it to, maybe I don't want it to be rural.
Agree, but that's, that's somewhat into Mitch's point about the role of the planning commission, is to have that long-range vision and to mold the zoning and the ordinances to accommodate that. And, and we, Mitch, just so you know, we have been doing that.
We have.
We have, we have struggled, and...
Well, I know, my vision is very short-term, so, you know, like...
No, I know, but it's, and that's why I want this more, is I, I wanna make sure, I live here, I want it to be nice.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of things that are happening I still don't like, but, you know, you can't control everything, but the, the whole steep slopes thing, I'm very proud that we, we made that happen. Uh, unfortunately, we have the quarry down here and we got where Dairy Queen is, but it's, uh, it's definitely diminished.
Oh, yeah.
Being of enforcement, if there's one thing we can enforce here, or...
Fix what?
There's no way that that's legal, what's happening.
It was, it, it started as a...
I just, I know the whole background, I was saying, it's what hap, what's going on there is illegal, there, the, the strategy that was used to try to, it was not illegal, I don't think was necessarily the right one, I think there are other ways we can pursue it, but we're not, we're not...
Well, it's a moot point now, it's almost done.
I know, you worked on it forever.
Let me just say, the strategy was, David, the strategy was, that supervisors, please provide us, the planning commission, with a copy of the original permit for that portion called the quarry. And, that's not the way we phrased it, but we never saw it, it was lost, was forgotten, it was not cooperated with for good reason.
Before everybody's...
The supervisors, the supervisors just basically refused to give us what we asked for.
It was, that was probably thirty-some years ago, that was in the eighties.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it was.
I just feel, anyway, talking about enforcement, if there was one enforcement thing with new blood, um, take a look at...
Yeah, but what are you gonna do? It's done.
What?
Yeah, but he's still, you're required to have a permit to, to do the things that are being done, and they're being done in, in an area where selling of that is a permit, it is not the use of...
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
The retail is selling down, man, there's so many things illegal.
I know, the, the, the right to get there is to con, do construction, and that's not what's happening.
I hear what you're saying now, okay.
I have to mention polluting the air with the fine silica particles, and it's...
I mean, if it was an industrial zone, I, that's what you do there, but that's not what it is.
Yeah. I just can't ever look into that.
Yep. Hey, this is...
No, I know, yeah. We just opened up a bigger can of worms.
And he doesn't believe it, and we've got, he believes that it was approved incorrectly under zoning, grandfather...
I don't, I've asked about it a couple of times, even before I, I ran and elected, but the story I got in short was some sort of, oh, when the supervisors approved it then, they approved it in site preparation for their shopping mall without a time limit, and for some strange reason, it's not been able to be changed. I haven't had much time looking at this because...
That's why I was...
And there's an even funnier codicil to that, which is, oh, there's a big rock that we have to, we have to blast and get rid of so we can flatten the, uh, the grain, a big rock, like, you mean a mountain?
Oh, you mean ten acres, this, yeah, right, it's granite, right?
Yeah, that's the big rock.
Alright, guys, alright.
Yeah.
I suggest one, we're saying quickly.
Yep.
Just, just because you brought up the comprehensive plan, that's something that's not lost on us, cause the current one is like two thousand and one.
Yeah, twenty years old.
But, uh, the suggestion for, I mean, we've been talking about for, for a while, but it wasn't brought up in a formal sense, you know, after the budget was, so, that's a topic, middle system has did one for like twenty-five thousand dollars, so, that's something we would have had the budget for. But it's not something that we don't care about, it's just something that's kind of missed the boat on that type of an expense.
Still thinking.
That's the kind of communication we want, right there, thank you.
That's the...
That's the truth, right.
Those are the assets plans are, are...
I think you covered the question of not on a, in Shawnee Valley, I think at a county level it makes sense, you said that, you said it all the time.
Okay.
Can we get just a little understanding on the notes that Lois sent out about the changes in the planning commission?
You mean the members?
What, the members? Yeah, yes, what about it?
Well, yeah, we talked about that before you got here.
Well, what's happening, I...
There were multiple applicants for the position to be filled, and they elected to take Chris Bauer over Bruce Sandy. Cause Bruce Sandy's term expired, he had to reapply.
Right.
Oh, he just told Mitch what he told us about.
Yeah, Mitch was walking in when we were talking about it.
The new, the new members.
Luke, will you join?
Second. Aye.
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 Hey, gentlemen, thank you very much.
I'm the, um... It's a phenomenal job.